Good evening and welcome to the January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five meeting of the Wilmington School Committee. All members are in attendance. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item of business for us this evening is the Wilmington Middle School Student Representative Report from Jordan Wedge and Olivia Smith. Good evening. Please join us. Thank you for being here.
Um, can, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. My name is Olivia Smith.
My name is Jordan Wedge.
And, um...
Today we'll be talking about the wonderful things happening at Wilmington Middle School.
Um, in the Performing Arts Department, the Wilmington Middle School Drama Club is proud to present Disney's Descendants, the Musical, on January thirtieth and thirty-first at six-thirty and on February first at four P.M. at the Joanne M. Bennen Auditorium here. This show is fun for the whole family and runs for ninety minutes, not including intermission. The hard-working students have been rehearsing every day except Fridays after school. Then on Tech Week, they will be, they will have rehearsals every day of the week to prepare for the shows. After speaking to some of the cast, they say they are preparing very well and it is tiring, although it will be worth it. Tickets for the show are fifteen dollars for adults, ten dollars for students and seniors, and free for WPS staff. Tickets are available for purchase at WPSK twelve dot ludus dot com.
Uh, in Project Three-Fifty-One, Project Three-Fifty-One is a state community service organization. Each year, all three fifty-one, all three hundred and fifty-one towns in the state elect one eighth-grade student to become the town's ambassador for the year. The student commits to participating in several community service products throughout the year and will have the chance to make a positive impact on all our local communities as well as the state as a whole. This year, Eliana Goldstein from the eighth-grade discovery team has been selected to be our town's ambassador for the two thousand and twenty-five calendar year. She will join the ranks of previous ambassadors who have extended their service, passed their ambassador year, and continue to make positive contributions to Wilmington. On Saturday, January twenty-fifth, Eliana will attend the Project Three-Fifty-One launch day, where she will spend the day doing community service in Boston. Although her year of service does not officially kick off until January twenty-fifth, Eliana has already helped to run the annual middle school food drive, which brought in a record-breaking one thousand four hundred twenty-five food items, all of which directly benefited the Wilmington community.
Um, the members of the math team, well, on to the math team now. The members of the math team practice math problems on Wednesday afternoons after school. They practice the five types of math: algebra, arithmetic, mystery, number theory, and geometry. They have competitions monthly where they compete against other schools around the area. Due to illness in this club, they had half of their competition, competition at their meeting last Wednesday. The other half of the competition will be taking place next Wednesday. The students in this club enjoy learning and practicing with other teammates.
Moving on to World Culture Club. In December, the World Culture Club celebrated French culture. The students in the club sampled eclairs and different cheeses with jellies. The first meeting of the month was on January seventh, where the club celebrated Hanukkah and learned how to play the game dreidel. Dreidel is usually played during this holiday. Ms. Lerner, the French teacher at Wilmington Middle School, came in as a guest speaker. The meeting, the next meeting is on January twenty-eighth, where the club will celebrate Chinese and Lunar New Year. The club has full meetings with a lot of students wanting to learn different cultures around the world, which shows the curiosity for different cultures at Wilmington Middle School.
Um, and now, um, for best buddies. Best buddies meet weekly after school. At the last meeting, buddies work together to create Valentines for Project Valentine by creating their own love monsters and cards. Each meeting is designed by best buddies' leadership to foster relationships between peers throughout the school. Students in Wilmington Middle School have shown much interest in best buddies, and it's an amazing club that welcomes everyone.
Uh, in after-school sports, the students have been playing a lot of ultimate football. With the Super Bowl coming up, students are excited for the big game. The club has also been playing basketball since a few students play outside of school and wanted to join.
Um, the robotics club had their first competition this Saturday at Brookline High School. Their next competition is February fifteenth, as they usually do two competitions a year unless they go further. The theme for this competition is Into the Deep, where robots will have to pick up pieces and drop them in their corners to earn points. There are two drivers, one of which drives the robot and works the steering, while the other controls the crane in picking up blocks in teamwork.
Uh, future science engineers. The club meets on Fridays, where the students all have their own projects. Some make robots and have them do simple tasks, while others test things like bridges after they design them. Students can also make airplanes and other things run with real electric motors.
Um, the ProPrint Literary Magazine will be seeking submissions from middle, middle schoolers on issue twenty-nine's themed Saturday morning cartoons. Submissions are due on March third. Guardians can encourage their students to submit art and writing about their favorite cartoons or cartoons that they make up themselves.
In art club, the club has made lots of projects during their time after school, including murals, ornaments, and giant snowflakes. Ms. Gill and Ms. Wolf come up with many different projects that the students can produce depending on the season. It's a great club where the students can really show their artistic ability and develop bonds with other student, students while creating different art pieces.
Um, the Wilmington Middle School is celebrating its twenty-fifth-year anniversary. Ms. Gill will be making the yearbook based around the twenty-five years of the middle school building. She will be photographing students, teachers, and other school employees with the number twenty-five props. The yearbook will also be showcasing and featuring teachers who have been teaching or working at, in the building for twenty-five years.
Some upcoming school events are, the second semester starts today. As a, as previously mentioned, the Wilmington Middle School will soon have a musical production, the play Descendants. The students are excited about our summer enrichment programs, and the signups are out now. Did you know that WMS has a grilling club? Well, we do. Thrill of the grill. And January thirtieth, we are having coffee with administration, where you can sign up and have coffee and donuts with the principal at Wilmington Middle School, Brian Kyra.
We have a ski club on Wednesday afternoons, where students can go out and ski at Neshoba Valley Ski Area. The middle school also has Good News Call of the Day, where teachers recommend a student each day that has shown to be a good representative for the school. CIT Day is also coming up, which means that the students will have a half-day. On CIT Day, teachers get professional training and learn different important skills to improve their learning environment. Um, thank you for having us.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you. I want to say thank you both. What, what, you mentioned ultimate football. What is ultimate football?
Uh, it's just football, except when you catch the ball, you have to run until you're tagged.
Oh, okay, rather than...
And you have to throw the ball again.
That's cool. Okay. Thank you very much. I didn't know that.
Thank you, guys. It's always so much going on at the middle school. It's great to learn about. All right. With no further ado, Mr. Ingram in the athletics department update.
It's a tough act to fall off.
Tough act to fall. You guys can come, Christina, you can come up too. Great job, Jordan and Olivia. I actually taught both of them. I think you were in fourth grade. No, that's great. Great job, guys. So I get, I got, before we get started, last night, just, um, so everybody knows it, girls' basketball, we had our eighth, um, student athlete achieve a thousand career points. Our third female athlete, Ava Boudreaux, reached that milestone last night. So, um, in the future, when we, uh, when we discuss the winter review, I'd love to, the opportunity to bring her on to kind of acknowledge that tremendous achievement. So without further ado, we're on here tonight to review the spring and the fall from two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, we're gonna go over, um, we had some spring state championships, we had some spring league championships, we had some fall league championships, and then lastly, I was gonna touch upon the Wilmington High School Athletic App. First, we had Ashvin Baker, who's actually sick. He was planning on attending tonight with Coach Kenny. Uh, a little bit of a bug going around, and Ashvin is, uh, recovering. Last spring for boys track and field, he was a state champion in the four hundred meters. Tremendous accomplishment, and he's actually, uh, been breaking school records this winter in indoor track as well. So congratulations to Ashvin. A tremendous, tremendous job there. We also had in track and field on the girl's side Molly Osgood, who graduated last year. Uh, you can see by the picture, she now, um, attends Stone Hill College for the track and field. She was a state championship winner in the high jump last spring. So congratulations to Molly Osgood. And then we had some league championships, uh, winners. First and foremost, with, with me, I have Coach Christina Woods, and I have MVP of the league Savannah Beatrice. Savannah was the MVP when she was a ninth grader, uh, just a wild, tremendous achievement there. Um, and our girls tennis team went the furthest any team sport we've had since the new format. They made it to the final four, as you can see there on that picture there. Just a great, great season. We had, um, everyone who started was an All-Star. Is that correct, Coach? Yeah. And, and again, Savannah, as a ninth grader, was all-conference and the league MVP. That just doesn't happen often. MVPs are very difficult to come by, let alone being a ninth grader. Uh, so we wanted to bring them on here to, um, acknowledge them. We got a picture with Dr. Brand and, um, and Mr. Fennelly beforehand. Uh, thank you very much for that. I promised them that they would take no questions. So let's get on to the next one. Also in the spring, our girl softball team was the league champ, and Lily McKenzie was an MVP. She's since graduated. She was a two-season MVP. She was an MVP in girls hockey and she was an MVP in softball. A great achievement. They had a nice season as well. Bringing us into the fall of this school year, um, our first league champion winner was the girls soccer team. You can see a picture here. We have, um, some of the members of the team and coach wearing the victory chain. We did bring the victory chain. Um, the goal of the victory chain is to kind of celebrate the kids and the teams when they win, um, to take a picture with it, and we post it on social media. We've also been working our way through the high school. We've almost gotten all the staff in the high school, and then we're gonna be branching out into the other schools in the district. Uh, we got Dr. Brand on day one of school. So if, if we haven't got you yet, um, be on the lookout for us. But the girls had a great season. They won the league. You can see here, they had five different All-Stars. Jill Collins was an all-state player for them. She'll be playing soccer in college as well. So a great season by the girls. And also in the fall, league champs, we had our cheerleading team. They advanced, and I believe they finished, uh, fifth in the state. Um, it was, it was quite a wild ride. Uh, they actually, the, the performance was at Worcester State. That's where this picture was taken. They had three different All-Stars in the team: Lily French, Isabel Cooper, and Erin Murray, um, Coach Kylie Valerio, um, and Assistant Coach Shannon Barrett. They also coached the cheer team in the winter, uh, and they have high expectations for the winter team as well. And that brings us to the Wilmington High School Athletic App. If you haven't heard of this, hopefully, um, this does spike your interest. Uh, we have roughly six hundred and twenty kids enrolled at Wilmington High School. We have almost a thousand downloads of the app. Um, so it's, it's hitting the kids, it's, it's hopefully hitting the parents, the fans, the teachers, and it's a way for us to kind of streamline all the information possible from athletics. All the schedules are synced up with Arbiter. That's what we use for schedules. So if there's a change or a cancellation, the app has it. Uh, you can have push notifications for as many teams as you want or as few teams as you want. Uh, if you wanted to buy gear from the store that we have, that is easily accessible right there. If you wanted to watch a game live-streamed, it's right there. Uh, if, if we're playing a team that, that only sells tickets via online, that link is right there. We run a weekly update, um, that is on the app. We have, uh, we have some great student involvement, taking pictures at games. Those pictures get shuttled there, and, and we're, we're really excited about the app. We kind of see it as one-stop shopping, streamlining all the information, uh, and we were really excited to bring it forth and, um, show everybody. And I know Dr. Brand was excited. We are the first high school in Massachusetts to have this app. Um, there are many more to follow, but we were the first one, so we're, we're quite proud of that, and we thank you for Dr. Brand and, um, Mr. Roggerio for letting us kind of do this when no one else has done it. Um, but it's really, it's really been great for us. Are there any questions from anyone? I can continue to talk about the app if you want.
I just want to, I just want to say, so I just downloaded it while we're sitting here, because, I mean, like, that's as good as, like, like, several professional sports league teams apps. I feel like, you know, like, I'm an MLS fan, and that's better than the MLS app, no doubt, you know, like, that's great. I'm so excited.
We, we, we think it's great, um, in the fall, record-wise, from all the teams, it maybe wasn't the best fall we've ever had, but the, the building was buzzing. There was a buzz at the, with the kids about the app and going to games to support that their, um, their teammates and their, it, it really has helped build a, a culture up.
Yeah, I, I do have an actual question, actually, I realize, um, besides just complimenting how cool this is. Um, so you mentioned there are students who are taking pictures to support, you know, like, getting the teams and, and the credibility, the, the attention they deserve. Could there be kind of more cooperation with students who do journalism? Like, I know we have a journalism course coming up for the high school. I think it'd be really cool if we get students who become, like, sports reporters.
Absolutely. Um, and we could easily incorporate, incorporate that into the app by just, we would create a card where we would have, you know, student-run stories with that, um, and that, that's definitely something that we would be interested in.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. Thanks.
Uh, no real question, but just want to say congratulations. Uh, that's a huge accomplishment to, you know, be performing athletics at that level and also being a ninth grader and then dealing with your schoolwork and your homework at night, too. So just want to say congrats and, you know, best of luck to you the rest of your career. Yeah.
To Savannah. Congratulations. So wonderful. Um, so, and congratulations to you. That's exciting, and we're excited for the, for the spring. It's gonna be fun. Um, the app is awesome. Love it, and the notifications are incredible. So as a parent who has multiple things going, it's like fantastic, and we knew about Eva Boudreaux, like, right away. I think it popped right up on my, on my screen. I was like, look at that. So it's like you have this easy access, immediate access, and tons of reminders about when things are starting. And I used to get emails a lot from community members asking for the schedule, and then I would send them the link on the website and the Arbiter, and there's so much to scroll through, and so this has really, I think, been a real changer for us, so thank you.
Just to say congratulations to, to both of you. It's fantastic. Um, and good luck this summer, the spring, excuse me.
Yeah, I'll echo congratulations. It is really quite the accomplishment, so you should be proud, and, and we're thrilled that you were willing and able to join us, and, and to you as well. Can you, Mr. Tinger, talk to me just very briefly about the live streaming? So if I'm understanding correctly, I can essentially watch a game through the app?
Right.
Is that right?
Yep.
Now, is that a partnership with WCTV, or is it something different?
No, it's, it's, it's through the huddle cameras that we have. So we have a huddle camera inside the gymnasium, and then we also have one on the stadium field. So any games that we have there are streamed live, and other schools have huddle. So what Huddle has enabled is, um, a sharing program, essentially. So if I'm playing your school, everyone from Wilmington has easy access to the game that's being streamed live.
Okay.
And it gets sent over to Huddle, where it's, it gets broken down for the coaches, where they can go over their stats and such.
That's great. Excellent. Thank you. Other questions?
I guess we need one more camera out there, though, don't we?
We're, we're always looking for more cameras. Yeah, a camera at the, um, the tennis courts would be fantastic.
Baseball, baseball field.
Get the baseball. Get the softball. And we get them all, right? We get them all.
Apparently, we need more cameras, Dr. Brand.
Apparently, more cameras. Paul, we'll be talking about. We can put a camera on the catcher's mask.
I could just say, uh, thank you first for being here. Dennis, thank you for your leadership, uh, not just the department, but for the app. But, you know, it, one of the things that I think we all collectively should be so proud of is the level of student involvement. Uh, we, we talk about the athletics a lot. We obviously have some outstanding student athletes. We talk about performing arts and the level of involvement in that. Um, it's striking, I've had, in the last probably six months or so, a couple of community members talk about, one of the things that they love so much about the culture here is the fact that even if their child is not a standout athlete, ninth grade, tenth or eleventh grade, they still, there's a, there's a, there's a promotion and acceptance of kids trying new activities, that they may not be that MVP, but they're still welcome to be a part of the team, they're still encouraged to try out. And I think, Dennis, we've talked about this before, with our overall student enrollment, the number of teams that we're able to field, so to speak, and the number of students involved, it's really, it's really pretty incredible. I have to think it's a testament to the coaching staff, your leadership, the leadership here to have that, and the students, to make that a welcoming culture for kids just to try things, and that's awesome.
Without a doubt. I mean, obviously, I care deeply about athletics and the role that it plays in developing young people. Um, I think it's so critical, but just an example to kind of touch on what you, you were speaking about, um, who, who takes the majority of our pictures is a, a young man named Shavon. Uh, Shavon plays zero sports, but he loves athletics. Um, and now he's, he is one of the most popular kids in the building. Uh, he's at all the games, he's running the student section, so like athletics, even though he's not playing, has impacted his life, and I feel like that's just like a great example of the greater good of what we're trying to do with athletics and young people.
Fantastic. Thank you. Okay.
Excellent.
Nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate all your time.
Congrats again.
Appreciate you guys. Congratulations again. And as always, you're more than welcome to stay, but we won't be offended if you go.
All right, that brings us to our consent agenda. We have approval of minutes January fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Is there a motion? Mr. Turner, seconded by Mr. Golden, all those in favor? That's five abstentions, two abstentions, Dr. McCallie and myself. Uh, all right, second read of the Wilmington High School Program of Studies. Is there a motion? Mr. Turner, second. Mr. Golden, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. And we have warrants, grants, twenty-two revolving thirty-seven, locals, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, food service, thirty-nine, circuit breaker, fifteen, special education, thirty-four, and thirty-five. Is there a motion? Mr. Ragsdale, second. Dr. McCallie, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. That brings us to the superintendent's report. Dr. Brand.
Thank you. Good evening. Two items, uh, tonight under the report. Um, first, just to draw attention to the, um, two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four WPS Annual Report for the town. As I think most are aware, the town, uh, puts together a highlight book of the year in the past. Um, I would admit, I'm not sure if that's mailed home, but certainly it's available at, uh, the town hall and, and, uh, town meeting. Uh, I think that it was three years ago, uh, I think, that we, uh, we recognized that we could up our game, no pun intended, following athletics, but, um, there is a, a particular type and structure for the town report, uh, that, for those of you familiar with it, all the departments follow, and we understand that. But we also thought that we just have so many amazing things happening throughout our school system that the limitations of that text and font and structure just felt like it was, um, not a good, uh, not the best way that we could showcase the amazing things happening through the district. And so, uh, we, uh, asked, uh, then-town manager Hall, Jeff Hall, if he would allow us to do something just a little bit different, and we did. And I think, as mentioned, this is our third year, uh, and you can see a copy of that report here. I think the value of this is not just to provide something to the town and the citizenry. Obviously, that's important through the vehicle of the town report, but it's a tool that we can use and disseminate amongst our, um, parents and guardians and our staff to get a sense of the other things that are happening throughout the school district. So, um, I think it's, again, I think it turned out, uh, great. The feedback has been positive. Um, thank you to Ms. Ingersoll and Ms. Elliott, who together particularly work hard to pull together the pieces. Obviously, thank you also goes to the contributions of our principals and other folks who were, uh, responsible for authoring their different sections. And, um, you know, certainly going forward, any feedback that you think would be great for us to consider to, you know, even improve this further, very open to that. Um, but just want to provide that to you, uh, for, for an update. Uh, and then, uh, second item tonight is the school district safety audit, item number six B. Um, there's a memo that accompanies this. You know, we've, uh, talked about this previously. Uh, this again, just as a reminder, and for those watching at home, the, um, the motivation for this or the impetus for this was, uh, reflective in our current strategic plan, in which we, we set out to complete a safety audit on, uh, on our school facilities. We've, we've done just that. Um, Mr. Lord, and I have talked about this previously, as outlined in the memo, this, this audit, um, through partnership with CISA, Cyber Security and Infrastructure Security Agency, which is a part, to note, of the United States Homeland Security Assessment Program. Uh, they visited the district in early December. You can see the outline, and I want to thank those that, um, uh, came along for the day. It was, it was a little bit longer than anticipated. I think it was close to five hours in total, but it was really well-done. Um, we, we covered three schools. Again, just as a, as a friendly reminder, it was the recommendation from the auditor, not that, um, not that he wasn't willing to cover all schools, but from his experience and the agency's experience, a flavor of three different school settings provide enough insight to go to, get a general sense of how our buildings are structured and what we have in place and so on. Uh, some of the areas that were covered as part of the report are highlighted on the second page of the memo, security management, facility entry controls, the building envelope, and, and a number of other areas. Uh, just a couple of things to note, we, this report came in just before the winter break, and so we are still working through it and processing it. Uh, in fact, this morning, Mr. Lord and I met with representatives from public buildings, fire department, police department, to get a first glance and review of the report. It's our intention to, um, uh, to take the report, to obviously identify those things that are, represents more immediate areas that were recommended for us to attend to, uh, work with our district safety committee on implementing those or putting in a place a plan to further explore those. Um, we will be putting together a, a high-level summary of the report. Um, as noted here and as talked about before, it's a recommendation not just to release the report at, you know, in its entirety, having to do with, you know, some sensitive issues around our, our building's safety and security. But that said, um, there's certainly information that we want to get out, and we will do so, and, uh, I highlight some of those there. I think the final thing to point out is, as was mentioned, um, both in person and in the report, there's a lot of, um, commendations on what we do have in place. There was an awful lot of, uh, there were a lot of comments around really a sense of, um, organized structure or continuity of approaches. They looked at a middle school, they looked at the high school, and they looked at elementary school. And so that was great to hear. Um, as always, there's things that we can do better by, and we'll work to do just that. So, so I'll pause there, and if there are any questions that folks have, happy to take those.
Thank you, Dr. Brand. Mr. Chair.
So, um, two different subjects. So first of all, in terms of the, the annual report, I, I think it's fantastic, um, and I appreciate the depth that goes into, as somebody who's gone back to prior years for different reasons, to look at the annual reports, it's amazing how much more depth this covers, but still not, you know, going into minutia, but it, it is a really good review of all the different schools, um, and I, and it's, it's fantastic. And I, oddly enough, when I think about our program of studies and the Wilmington history class, there's elements of the annual report that could be very useful to that class, and this type of document, especially the last three years, you can start to go back And I, oddly enough, when I think about our program of studies and the Wilmington history class, there's elements of the annual report that could be very useful to that class. And this type of document, especially the last three years, you can start to go back and then go back further and, and learn a lot about the way our schools have performed and the way our schools have, have evolved over the years through that simple, that one document and the collective history it represents. So I really appreciate the, the depth that goes to now. It's, it's fantastic. And then I, in terms of security audit, I'm very glad we've accomplished that. I, I, I think it's a really good sign for the district that we're being proactive about those sorts of things and continue to focus on that as an important topic. So, thank you.
Thank you for the feedback.
Thank you. Others?
Yep. Thank you. Yeah. So a few things. First, to start off with the annual report, I'd just like to echo Mr. Turner's comments. I thought it was really very well put together report. I think showed the right amount of information of what goes on in every school. And I also liked it was a little more heavier on the high school, a little less middle, and then the elementary a little less, which I think just speaks to the breadth of services offered at those schools, too. So, yeah, I hope this continues in the future as well. With the safety audit, first question I have is, so really happy to see that this has been completed. Just wondering if we are going to, in the future, expand this to some of the other schools that didn't really go under this audit?
That's a great question. And I think, I would say that from the information that was gleaned from the report, we have, we have a number of things already that we can see being implemented or applied to the other campuses. So I, I think right now where we're at, it would be, it's not to say that we couldn't reach back out, but I, I think that we have, they gave a lot of detail, a lot of, really, the analysis was pretty thorough. Again, it was, it was probably about, give or take, about an hour and a half in each school. And so I, I, I understand the perspective and the, what was conveyed to say, you know, we don't need to do every single school because you'll get a sense of the common elements. And it's true. And that said, there's certainly some things that might be a little bit more unique at one school or another. So I think if, I think it would be fair to say, if we are grappling with something and we're not sure how to approach something, I know that they're a resource, number one, and he put that out there for us to be able to reach back out, too. But I, I don't think there's anything that would stop us from, you know, reaching out and seeing if they could come back in to help.
Okay. Yeah, it's great to hear. And then I know you were just getting the information, and there's probably a lot of sensitive information in that report, too. Just wondering if something that might be worked on is like a redacted or summarized version for the public to see?
Yes, very much so.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Golden and then Mr. Smaha.
Thank you. And kind of building to some degree after, off of Dr. McCalli's point, I guess for me, could you maybe provide a little color as to, with regard to security? Kind of how much is infrastructure related in what they observed? How many of the comments referred to structural building-related things as opposed to procedures?
Yeah, that's a great question. I would, I would say that the, the majority of them were structural. Some procedures, but the, the majority of them were, were structural. Some, some will certainly require, you know, financial resources, some not. But there's certainly a financial implication there, which, which is to say that, you know, not, not only, and I can appreciate the committee's interest in this topic at large, and we want to make sure that we can inform you of that, but there's also the intersection with budget and, and financial. Some of that could be supported by the town. Some of that, you know, some of those things we may have to consider grappling with as a district within the budget going forward. But, so we have to kind of weigh that out. Some of the things we'll need to get some pricing on and just think a little bit differently on. And I think that, you know, the thing to also keep in mind, as we talked about, we're moving forward with this across all buildings, not just looking at the schools that might not be affected by the hopeful passage of a new school building. Even with that, in the fall, as you know, it's going to be a good number of years before a new school facility is opening. And so I'm looking at this as a, as a holistic approach for all of our seven physical buildings that are operating going forward, even if multiple buildings are going to be part of this building project that's going to unfold in September.
Thank you.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm curious about how, like, is this some, is this process, is this something that, as a district reminder, might want to revisit every five years, every ten years? Or is this like, I guess, what is the scope of this? Is this talking about stuff that can get fixed or corrected in the next couple of years, and then we're going to have to look at it again? Do you have a sense of like, the scope of it in that, in that sense?
Yeah, that's a good question. I, I think that what's been identified here, again, more to the building and envelope and infrastructure, are things that have taken care of, they'll be taken care of, and they'll be in place, right?
Okay.
As opposed to something that's sort of a temporary, not fixed, but a temporary approach that might have to be redone. But with that said, you know, with a new school facility coming online, right? And we, we'll of course have people who are involved and who know school safety and security will be working with the design team, and they'll be coming up with solutions. But that being said, even with a brand-new school, once it's fully occupied with hundreds of people and multiple staff, you know, this, this was an assessment taking a look at even such things as traffic patterns and, and access points. And, and, you know, things that perhaps laypeople might not be thinking of through the same lens, but it was helpful to get the sense of, oh, yeah, you know, that, that might be something we wasn't thought of. Or the way that we're routing traffic now, maybe making, creating an issue that we didn't think about. So I, I think the question of having them return, totally fine. And I think even a new facility online, it certainly can't hurt. It only gives us an objective sense of, okay, here, we're in a pretty, pretty good place here with this. So.
Okay. You have anything else?
Thank you, Dr. Brand.
Thank you. Brings us to public comment. There were both no public comments received in advance, nor members of the public who signed up in advance to deliver public comments. And there are no members of the public joining us here this evening, so we will have no public comment. That brings us to new business. And the first item of new business is the 2025 summer program updates.
Do you want to, we never talk to you. Do you want to take this?
So on the screen, you can see the summer enrichment registration has been open now for a couple of weeks. And we have some exciting opportunities this summer. So one of the things that you'll see is we're trying to offer like different levels of courses because we've offered some in the, as we started, and now those kids have taken that level, and we want to be able to provide them another opportunity. So we have Python Programming One and Two, Experienced FTC Robotics and FTC Robotics Programming, Computer-Aided Design. We have a, new this year is a Harry Potter Steam Workshop. We have an expanded Summer Theater Camp, so that's a much longer opportunity for kids to put on a full production. We have etiquette for every day, barbecue basics, and then the thrill of the grill. You get to hear it again. So you can read the, through the full descriptions on the registration form. The signup is on the website. The QR code also, even though it's a little wide, still works, check that, is on the slide. So you can find all that information either in the packet or on our WPSK website, K-12 website. So we're excited to be able to offer those courses this year and encourage people to enroll before seats are, are full. So happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Elliott. Questions? Mr. Turner?
Just a, a question, comment, and then, and then an observation. So the, the etiquette for every day, I had to double-check what that one was. And I actually think it's fantastic, and I, and I hope it gets kind of advertised pretty well, because the skills it talks about, you know, mock interviews, networking, and even table manners and those sorts of things, I think are really good, useful ones.
Right.
It's like we have the requirement for the financial awareness class in the high school. That's a pretty important set of skills for kids to have. And especially as they get towards the end, end of high school, they're going to go off and interview for summer jobs and things like that. Having those skills, I, I think that's a really good one. And I was pleasantly surprised when I read that one in detail. And the other one I want to mention, oddly enough, is, is the Summer Theater Camp. Part of why I was really excited about that one is not only that it's longer and they're, they're doing it with all the grades at once, four through eight, but there's also the internship opportunities for grades nine and 10, and paid positions for grades 11, 12, and, and recent graduates. So I think that's a cool program, because it not only is learning for the kids, but also develops things for the older students as well. So it's, it's a pretty fantastic. And the, the breadth of the programming is, is great as always.
Yeah, we're excited that it's really taken hold. You know, it was a slower to start the first year, trying to build some capacity and get our registration out earlier to, you know, so many families are registering kids for summer camps in January as soon as the calendar turns. So we wanted to really have this available and publicized early on. So it's been, it's been great. So we, you know, it's really, last year, it really started to take hold. All along, we kept getting, every time we put out feedback, the, it kept, the, the question was, you know, we want to see theater. We want to see more theater. And that was a big driver. And so we did the smaller theater program last year, but this, this year, we're like, all right, let's see if we can, if we can do it and get enough kids to run it. So we're excited about that opportunity. And I think that will be a, a lot of fun to have it be a three-week, from start to finish experience, and really be able to put on a production and to see it all and, you know, fast-forward, if you will.
Thank you. Others?
Yep. So just want to echo what you just said about putting these online so early. So thank you for doing that this year. As a parent, I've already had to register my kids for camps already, a couple of weeks ago. And if I didn't do it a couple of weeks ago, they would have missed out on those camps. I was just wondering if, because it's now earlier this year, if that will have a positive impact on enrollment. So I was just wondering if we can get a report out sometime in the summer when the camps are over or something, just to see if we're seeing an uptick or not.
Sure, yeah. You know, definitely. So we have co-directors, Matt Hackett and Mike Jones are our summer program co-directors for the enrichment and the summer school recovery program. So they keep me well-informed, and we'll send updates with, you know, the numbers and how things are going. So I'm, and they, you'll see in your packet tonight, actually, it was from last year's summer program that they included that information. So I'll have another one of those as well that I can bring back to this committee and share. But happy to share updates as I get them along the way.
Yeah, that was helpful to see. Theater definitely was a big draw, for sure.
Thank you. Mr. Exel.
Mr. Turner spoke a lot of my thoughts about the, the drama program and the, and the etiquette for every day. But I wanted to say a few, few additional words about the, the etiquette for every day, because I was also really intrigued by that and, and gratified by it. I think that, that how to behave and feeling comfortable in knowing how you're supposed to behave is something that we don't often necessarily think needs to be explicitly taught. And, I mean, I don't want to try and say that, just like, you know, back in my day, these kids today. But I think that there was kind of like, you know, a time when it was acknowledged as something a little bit more explicitly that, that people needed to know, that like, you wouldn't just pick it up necessarily, that like, someone has to show you how you're supposed to act at a job interview or act at the table and so forth. And, you know, we have a kind of a, a culture that's in a lot of ways kind of very outrage and attention-driven. And, and I think it's really nice that we're offering this opportunity. And I, I'll be very curious to see how many people are interested in taking advantage of it. I hope it's a good number. But even if it's a small number, I think the people who say, yeah, you know what, that is something that would be really, really good for me, I think that they're going to get, get a lot of benefit from it. And so I was really pleased to see that.
Thank you.
Quick question.
Please.
The same, with the etiquette for every day, is, is that a program that they adopt and then, or someone developing that from scratch and they created?
I believe that the latter, someone's developing it, I believe. I'm not sure. I'm not actually sure who's teaching that, so.
Yeah, I'm intrigued. I'm curious. I'm, I'm curious to see how many sign up. And I'm, my only, this table manners piece, I'm just hoping that that doesn't keep people away, because I feel like the other stuff I could see as a parent of high, of a high schooler and freshman in college, I'm like, ooh, yes, yeah, oh, that's interesting. Okay, yeah. So I just hope it doesn't, like, I'm so just curious to see how the registration goes.
I don't know. I wonder, I think some parents might just be like, table manners, god, yes, please.
Could be.
No.
That might be a harder sell for a high schooler than networking, social cues, all of that. I totally see high school kids wanting that. And I think you can throw the table manners in there, but I'm not sure it'll add much to the description. But, but just, so just a comment. We'll see, see what happens.
Well, and piggybacking on Mr. Exel's comment, for parents who are potentially interested in etiquette or any of the other enrichment programs, the registration link is essentially on the bottom half of our homepage. So right on the, right on the front page, which is great.
District newsletter from here.
And in the district newsletter. Thank you, Tracy. Mr. Turner?
Sorry, one thing I forgot. The one thing I didn't mention earlier is, is the robotics program at the middle school, the robotics program at the high school, and the connection through this program is phenomenal. And, and we heard earlier about the middle school robotics program. And it's, it's a place where we have the linkage between the high school and the middle school. And then the fact that they're able to enhance it here is, is really fantastic. And it's, it's really clearly a program that's taken off and taken hold. And it's, it's well noted.
It's nice to have sort of a feeder opportunity, if you will, or for somebody to get their feet wet if they're not sure, especially our younger kids from, coming up from the intermediate grades that want to see, try it on for size. Do I like this? And I, I'm not committing to a whole big season-long thing, but try a summer workshop to see if they like it. So it's a great way to create opportunities and build some feeder programs.
Thank you.
No, please go ahead.
I'm looking it up online right. Are the Wildcat Summer Sports Clinics out yet? Not yet. So, but that would be, so just, yeah, because that would be helpful. So I think a lot of families wait to see what are those dates going to be? How might this play into it or not play into it? And so that, I was just looking. I'm like, wait, is it up? Did I miss it? But it's not up yet. Do we have a date on when those are released?
I'm not sure, but I know we tried to get us up. Ours up sooner. That was strategic.
I see, I see. I know, really.
I'll remind Dennis tomorrow.
I am not.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. That brings us to item B, the middle school principal search.
Yes, thank you. There's a, a memo that's in your packet regarding this item. As always, with these searches, try to give the committee and the community an update on, on where we're at, what the timeline looks like, and, and the process, as well as a shout-out to those that serve on these, these committees, folks who spend an awful lot of time as part of this, and we, we thank them for this. So as, as a reminder, and for those watching, we are in the process of conducting a search for a permanent middle school principal. So remind, Dr. Jeanette Quirk, a previous principal, left the position in August, late in the summer. And so again, a huge thank you to Mr. Kyra, who's stepped into the interim role as principal. You can see an overview of the search. We're conducting this as we do other leadership searches, and this falls squarely into the direction of Ms. Stern Armstrong. But I think you know, I work very closely with her. I, I believe wholeheartedly in the approach that she's developed. And I think it's the right approach to bring stakeholders into the, the mix as part of the screening committee, to help to review applications, identify those applicants that seem to align with the position. And that, I should point out, is also connected to the other document that's in your packet, and that's the survey results. For a leadership position like this, we, in general, try to gather feedback from stakeholders that are most directly connected to the position. Doesn't happen necessarily in every situation, but certainly for school principals, we try to do so, recognizing that we've got a parent guardian group and a, and a staff group. So you can see the results there. I will share that these, these results will be sent out to this, both the staff and the community at large tomorrow, the middle school community. So they'll get a copy of this. The search process has begun. Interviews took place earlier this week. So we are right on course for the timeline that we set out, which, which is obviously always great. And you can see that we're heading towards anticipation of semifinalists being announced next week. I want to, again, give my thanks to those that are listed on the memo in the interest of time. I won't go through them all, but we had great interest in this, and, and great number of folks who came forward, both from the staff as well as from our parent guardian community. And so you can see a list of them there. I met with them, as I always try to do at the very outset of these kind of searches. We had a bit of a conversation, and then I pulled myself away from the search with the understanding that these folks will roll up their sleeves, work hard, and then advance forward. What we use the term as semifinalists. And from there, Andrea and I take, take those semifinals and move forward. So I wanted to give you that update, and I'll pause there if you have any questions on any of that.
Thank you, Dr. Brand. Questions?
Yeah. So I thought the survey results were really interesting. I'm kind of reading through them. And a couple of themes I kind of noticed were that I think staff and the community are really looking for someone that can be a strong leader, and then also someone that can really kind of improve the overall culture in the middle school.
Yes.
Right? And I think that's like the big thing for the search committee to kind of take away, is like whoever that they find, could they find someone that really is going to improve the culture at that middle school and make it, bring it to the potential that it has, right? And we've seen such great progress with the high school, with Mr. Gendron, that, you know, I feel very confident we'll be able to find someone at the middle school who could do the same thing. So out of curiosity, I'm just wondering, how many applicants have been, did we receive, and how many are currently being interviewed right now?
I believe the number was eighteen applicants that were received. And the total number from that, I believe, was six that were interviewed.
Yeah, that's great. It's a good amount of applicants.
And just to piggyback, how many will the committee recommend to put forward for the next step?
That's a good question. That's still being sorted out right now. Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Turner?
Want to, to follow up on that, the other, the other place where I saw a lot of really interesting feedback on the survey side was the communication piece.
Yes. Yep.
The very important side of both, both communication with parents and community and communication with all, with teachers and staff. It's, it's clear that there's a real strong desire for high-quality communication. And so I hope that the finalists that are, are brought forward have that as a really strong point in their, in their background.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Other comments, questions? Dr. Bryson?
It's a pretty large committee. Is that typical of these searches?
Uh, yes, yeah, for principals. Yeah. And now, sometimes they might be smaller, but that would be reflective of necessarily not the interest that might be there for different reasons. Sometimes it's not so easy to gather, everyone's busy, and, and the times that may be proposed don't work. But it was, it was a good turnout. We unfortunately had to turn some folks away, which is a good problem to have, I think. But we feel like there was representation. And one of the things that you can see here, there was also, with the middle school, also some deliberacy to try and include the intermediate school representation as well, knowing that those parents, you know, three, three years is not long, knowing those parents will be soon a part of that school community. So we tried to do that in this particular case. We might not say if we were doing a search of the elementary school, that might be different, but in this, it seemed like that was appropriate.
Thank you. Mr. Exel, Mr. Golden?
Just along that line, I'd also note that some of the people on this committee are parents of high school students. And that, of course, is the other connection, that the middle school is preparing people to move forward. And so they also have some experience in seeing how the middle school has prepared their children. in seeing how the middle school has prepared their children, moving forward to the high school.
Good point. Mr. Golden?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I was wondering how the survey was kind of spread to the public, in the school community, like, who accessed it, who was able to access it? There's, there's one, listen, I mean, students are children, but they're also receiving the education, and there's one student response here, so I was just wondering, like, who accessed it? Was it available in other languages, size of it was?
Yeah, so, to answer the first question, this was pushed out through school, the school newsletters, both at the middle school and then at the intermediate schools. I'm not certain about the students, I can find out the answer to that. I don't know how that was distributed, that certainly popped out at me, and I, and I don't know if that was a byproduct of that just being shared by family, you know, family member. I think that's probably the case, but I'll find out.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Without further ado, Dr. Brand's FY '26 recommended budget presentation.
So, we are where we said we would be, in the timeline relative to the budget of fiscal year '26, and this is, this is the second formal presentation of the budget that we, in Wilmington, refer to as the superintendent's recommended budget. Again, fiscal year '26, what we're talking about, hard to believe, but it is, and so this is for the '25, '26 school year. There are two items that accompany, well, actually, more than two, three, in the packet. One, a cover memo, a budget memo, that tries to provide you with the highlights around what has unfolded since we last were here, talking about the budget in December, and some of the things that we've grappled with to put together this next rendition, if you will, of the budget. There is the copy of the slide deck that I'll go through in just a moment here, and then there's, of course, the full budget, that is a good number of pages that, that provides you with more detail, specific detail on the budget line. So, I'll take a pass to run through this, but obviously, questions, either Christine or Paul can help out along the way, too. So, first, uh, some context of where we left off, let me just pull this up for myself, sorry. Where's this again? I had it, but, it's, sorry. So, as is always the case, we, it's really a timing aspect of following that first presentation, the preliminary budget. We then have the opportunity to meet with the town manager, and Mr. Slagel, current town manager, approached this process no different than Mr. Hall did in the past. Not sure whether this changes going forward, but certainly he stayed true to try and support the process that's in place to understand how, how it operates here in Wilmington. So, Sali, Mr. Rogirio, and I met with the town manager to review our district's preliminary budget, that was right before the winter break. This was an opportunity to bring him up to speed with what we were grappling with as a, as a department, a large department, but as a department, some of the budget drivers that we're facing, and what that led to in terms of our first pass for the preliminary budget. As has been the case for certainly my time here and, and prior to that, it's at that meeting in which the town manager then shares with the department heads, which, in this case, is us, what he believes that the town's budget picture can support in terms of an allocation for our department. As noted on the slide and the memo, the, the request for our department, as a school department, was to try and deliver this budget at 4.0%. That resulted in, that was obviously a, a number smaller than what we presented to you back in December with the preliminary budget, and that, some total difference to align with 4.0%, as you can see there, on the bottom of the slide, equates to a, a reduction of just a little bit over $650,000. So, as has been the case in the past, when, when this takes shape, we, the central office team, really take this budget from here, at least as the first pass of it, and take another look at the wide variety of things that we have, that we presented to you, and, and that's the, the roll-up budget lines, the positions. Really take a, a lot of time to go back to, what did we put forth here? It, it doesn't in any way, and I want to make sure that this is understood, it doesn't in any way suggest that what we had as part of the budget plan before you in December was frivolous, or not thought out, or, "Let's throw it on the table and see if it'll stick." Rather, it was more of, this was representative of the requests that came forward. As you know, we vetted those carefully, and tried to put forth that as a, as a package at the time of what we thought was, was reasonable, without knowing that number from the town manager. $650,000 is a lot of money, obviously, and it's not something that we just have in non-salary positions. And, and so, but it's also the case that we didn't have, in my opinion, I think I can speak for the team, that sitting in positions that we could eliminate. It's striking me all the time that I see the budget headlines that are around us, with a lot of districts struggling, deeply with financial, financial hardships, who are in the place of having to lay off a lot of staff. I, I, that, I don't know how we would do that, because I don't, I just, I don't know how we would do that. So, to approach this, we took a sort of two-pronged approach. First, let's take a look at the non-salary expenses, where is it that we might be able to shave off a little bit here or there? What is it that we put forth that we otherwise should have put forth, but we can push off to a later fiscal year? And we did that, and, so talk about that in just a little bit of, in just a little more. The, um, there were a couple of positions, though, that we did identify, those positions obviously, obviously, obviously carry with them greater weight in terms of the overall bottom line. And you can see here that what this recommended budget is now before you. We have returned to consider those positions that we put forth, including the district-wide behavioral specialist, 1.0. The high school teacher, I know I'd referred to it previously as the business teacher, but Mr. Gendron corrected, corrected us, or me, really is within the social studies department, although the offerings were going to be more centered around business-related courses, so I just want to call attention to that. And then the program coach for special education. All of these, I continue to believe are important, would have been important positions for our district, but they're not positions that we have in our, in our, in our, in our payroll and our staffing complement right now. And so, to us, and to me, it seems like that's an appropriate place to start, if we can. Now, you'll recall that we also put forth in the preliminary budget, new positions with the necessary expansion of special education program at the Woburn Street School. We've, I feel strongly they need to be there. We have a cohort of students that are moving up, six students, if I remember correctly. If we don't add staff for that program, then we can't service those students. So, we're making that distinction between those two positions and this, these set of positions. The impact there is that, and I, I want to draw attention to that, it's not, it's not, not such that we don't think that we can operate, it's not such that we don't think that we're going to have to, we're not going to have classes for high school students to take, but it will put pressure on these areas. And, and we can certainly talk more about that with your questions, but I, I want to, again, point that out. These are positions that I still think would be incredibly valuable to have as part of the budget, but if we have to make reductions, this provides us with an avenue, with an avenue to do so. I will call out the note on the bottom of the slide, the memo, and that is that we, we are hopeful, we've talked about a grant, without getting too into the weeds on that, though, but there's a grant that we believe that we may, that we're going to try and pursue, and if successful, that could align with the requirements of the grant with a special education coach. Grants, though, run in different cycles, and so we can't talk with assuredness that that will be available to us, but we are certainly going to try. So, the non-salary changes, to go into a little bit of detail here, are captured on this next slide, and they total almost $420,000. I can understand there's some, maybe some questions from members of the committee on that, and we certainly can get to these in, in a moment. We, we will, I will note that, in addition to the central office leadership team's review of these, we also did reach out and engage interim principal Kyra at the middle school and principal Gendron here at the high school, for the primary reason that their budgets, by design, are certainly far different than the elementary budgets. The elementary schools have very, very basic, thin, if you will, budgets, there's not a lot to draw from there. There are more built into the high school and middle school budgets, and hence why we thought we needed to engage them, and they were helpful to help identify some things here, which we can talk more about. But you can see the categories here, spanning a number of different areas, including professional development. This is not to say that we don't have funding still in the budget plan for professional development, we do, but we, we pulled back on that. Electricity to cares, I think members of the committee know, now, we have a, a number of different areas that are offset to revolving accounts, athletic revolving account, cares revolving account. Paul can certainly speak a little bit more to this, if, if there's questions around this, but the offset of pushing more of the electricity costs to cares, there are, there are requirements and regulations around how much of these fiscal costs can be put into these revolving accounts, but I know, I, I know we're, we're certainly in good hands with Paul's stewardship to make sure that we're, we're keeping in, in line with where we need to be with this kind of shifting. Athletic transportation revolving, another pit here. So, you can see these lines, we can come back for questions if you have, but I think it's important to say that our, our review of this, we've identified cuts and not an insignificant number of cuts, the biggest being offset to circuit breaker, which, again, we can talk more about in a moment. But there, there are other things here, but, you know, one example, just quickly to share, is in textbooks. Sali, you can help me out with this, but I, I know that this textbook, this, this textbook allocation is, is not eliminating the replenishment of textbooks, but it's one particular textbook, right, Science?
We're on a, like, a replenishment cycle, a rotation of updating textbooks, and we had two different textbooks in the budget, one of them we really need for next year, and the one beyond that was, it would have been nice, but it can wait till next year. It's not urgent at this point.
So, the roll-up, what this looks like in terms of the comparison for preliminary to recommended is captured here on, on this slide. You can see the salary from fiscal year '26, the preliminary budget where we were in December, in comparison to the recommended budget tonight, this budget here before you, and that adjustment there. The non-salary is the next line, you can see the comparison between the preliminary and the recommended, and then the total roll-up down the bottom. Personnel changes, we talked about some of these, and as you know, with Paul's tracking of this, with an effort to be completely transparent with all of the moving pieces to the budget, capture those that may have been added since the budget was approved since the start of the school year, those we've talked about previously, those are captured on the top of the slide. Educational assistance required for move-in of a student, as well as the need to expand our EL teaching, teaching staff. The budget changes, you can see, are captured down the latter part of the slide from the start of the school year, staffing increases, reductions, a whole lot of moving parts, but we, we, we capture these in an effort to try and show the committee and the community all of the ins and outs, the additions and the deletions that are, that are impacting the bottom-line changes for staffing. Salary changes, is captured here on this side, this slide, this highlights the steps and lanes changes, and so, again, just for a reminder, if we were to take all of our existing staff and move or roll that staff over to July 1st of next fiscal year, that identifies the total fiscal resources necessary to support their continued employment here in the district. New positions, salary changes, replacements and reductions are combined in that next line, and then longevity, something that is a contractual, contractual aspect there is highlighted in the third line. So, you can see the overall percentage change for salary changes. Non-salary changes are highlighted on the next slide, and there's a, a whole vast number of budget lines that help make up this salary line, or the budget line here, you can see all of the, all of the changes and adjustments there, and you can see the total percentage change that's captured here for non-salary changes. So, where that brings us to this evening, the recommended budget, this compares fiscal year '25 budget, this current fiscal year, school year, to '26, and you can see the total salary changes there, the non-salary changes, and then the total change from fiscal year '25 this year to next year. Staffing positions, just as, as a reminder, these were identified by program leaders or school leaders, department leaders through the district. If, if money was no object, certainly is no question that there, we could benefit from additional, additional services in a number of different areas, but obviously, there are limitations to fiscal resources, and so, we wanted to at least be able to share this with you. It's not easy to make these, these reductions or not support some of these, but they're here to suggest the good thinking on, on the part of our other leaders, and there's a lot of that, it's just unfortunate we can't support, we can't support everything that folks come forward with. Capital requests, we've talked about before, there's a lot of data on this, but this gives you a long-term view. This is consistent of how the town asks departments to approach this, and we've done this in the past, a five-year outlook, so, starting with fiscal year '26 through until fiscal year '30. Largely speaking, capital again for us, here in this district, and how this is contended with is transportation, minivans, as well as, as well as technology, for the most part. But you can also see in there some furnishings, as we try and replenish some of our existing classroom furniture and school furniture. So, the budget summary captured here, and, and this gives you the roll-up of what we're talking about, both in terms of staffing, the total staffing cost forecasted a 4.7% increase, and the non-salary, 1.3%. We've talked previously about some of the drivers relative to non-salary, transportation costs going up, as we've talked about previously here, specifically for out-of-district transportation, as well as some of our special education tuitions, were the larger, some of the larger budget drivers for this year. And so, there certainly is, you know, this is, this is difficult work, and it's not a perfect science to this necessarily at all, but we, we, we've, we've built this around what we believe to be our identification of some reductions that we, we believe that we can make, not without some pain, not without some discomfort, not without some interruption in things that we had originally planned and talked about in, in December. But, we are, we are, we're delivering this as a recommendation to you, obviously for your consideration, this is ultimately a budget plan that you, as a school committee, have to approve in the coming weeks. We certainly welcome your feedback, and, and happy to take questions as we, we land here today. I think the final piece, you know, is, as I pointed out in the memo, is, we're, we're, we're holding on, we're holding on tight to the staffing and the resources that we, that we, based upon our known needs right now, can deliver for the fall. But there is growing concern in terms of the continual, if there is the continual escalation in especially non-salary expenses, that districts, not just us, have had to contend with over the years. And from all that we can tell, and taking a look at our forecast for student enrollment, will remain relatively, roughly speaking, around where we're at with some, you know, some, some, some adjustments. The concern is growing in terms of what this is, how we're going to be able to sustain this, if we are continuing to just operate within the, the, the town's allocation of, of budgeting. So, I'll pause there, happy to take questions that you have.
Thank you, Dr. Brand. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Dr. Brand, thank you, Paul, and thank you, everybody who worked on this budget, obviously really tough. I want to kind of first speak to what you were closing there with, because, you know, I think what folks at home need to kind of understand, if there's a message to take away from this budget, a big overarching narrative should be that even as enrollment grows modestly, because it is growing, and that's a testament to the talent that we have here, the costs are going to rise at an accelerating rate relative to that modest growth, which creates a, a level of, of unsustainability with regard to the budget, because of how we fund schools in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to begin with. Now, hopefully, they, those listening at home, take that into account when they go to town meeting, or when they, when they vote on, on whatever comes before them as members of the public, but I, I also think that it's incumbent upon us to look at, to start having, starting the conversation about where we can get more funding within our own control, areas that may previously have, have cost either nothing or little, and may, we just may have to have a serious conversation about it, because I think it's, as the folks who work in the district, and as the people who, you know, educate children, are doing the best they can, it's, it's important for us to respect that, and also have a serious talk about where we can get more funding, because if the special education costs keep rising at an accelerating rate, you know... at an accelerating rate, you know, with the way Prop 2 and 1/2 is structured, it's incumbent upon us to, to think more seriously about that. With regard to, I just have two more specific things. The capital budget there, how flexible is that? Because some of the security improvements there are kind of pushed out, the camera-wise, and we were just talking about this, this survey we did, could that be adjusted if we, if, after we have a further conversation about the security survey that we did?
Do, do you mean, could that capital plan be adjusted to reflect new items to add?
Well, or like, so, so for example, some of the camera improvements are, are later and if we find that one of the takeaways from the audit that you performed is that we want better cameras, would, could we be able to move those cameras up and push something else back? Set in stone.
I think this capital budget right now is kind of set for FY '26. We do have security improvements in the, for FY '26 as well, they're not, happen not to be cameras, but there's always the ability to move, like some of these cameras are out in, can't really follow, in '28 and '29, not to say that we couldn't move those to '27 and so forth by the time we go through the audit and determine what needs, what can be done right away and what be the next thing to do.
For sure, for sure. Okay, so there is some flexibility for the next budget. And then, and then finally, the, the special education program, program coach, I'm really glad that you're pursuing a grant for that. I wish you the best of luck in getting that grant because I think it's really important. I think when folks at home look at a budget like this and they see a lot of these specialist positions or coaches, they think gee, when I was in school, there were teachers and principals and custodians and guidance counselors, but what are all these specialist positions? And they might think that some of these might be superfluous and really they're not, like with how difficult, you know, and, and important it is to have the best talent in special education, having someone like that who can be at your shoulder after a really hard day and give you a new way to help a student is so critical. So I really am glad that we're, we're going for a grant for that and I, and if we don't get that grant, I would love to come back and see if there's anything we can do because that's a really important position in my opinion.
If, just real quick, if I can add for the benefit of everyone and those watching at home, it is not uncommon for school districts to have partially or fully grant-funded positions. That's not to say that we have, you know, dozens and dozens of them, we don't, but it is a reality that the districts work with. And just as a friendly reminder, we started down the path with family engagement specialists coming out of the pandemic that were first brought on board through grant funding. We obviously brought them, as you recall, at least two of them into the budget full-time, but, so it's not, it's not a sort of a pipe dream or whatever the right term is to say that this is possible. We do know that there's, there's monies that could align with this, so that's why we're a little more optimistic. And then the other thing, just back to security for a moment, there's also grant money out there for security and, and I think that the most recent, this was just before the pandemic, if I remember correctly, or thereabouts, grant funding to support lock replacements at the middle school, the exterior of the, of the building. So that might also be another avenue that we can pursue, depending on where we size up the priorities there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gold. Mr. Turner.
So first of all, thank you very much to all of you who worked so hard to prepare this all across the district leadership and whatnot. I really appreciate the time and effort and thought that goes into this. A couple of quick comments and then a couple of questions. One, I do sincerely appreciate our town and the fact that we are not looking at cutting dramatically. It is a reality for a lot of towns and it is painful and sad for, it's, it's not appropriate for children and their education, but it's happening. I do want, just for the record, CPI was more than double our non-salary expense rate last year, so effectively we're cutting our non-salary expenses. And so when people see a 1.3% increase, oh, you're raising it, it's going up. No, effectively in real dollars, that is going down and so that is a cut. And so when you, that's one of the things that I struggle with, with Prop 2 and 1/2 is the reality is many years, overall town budgets do effectively go down. And so that's the reality of that part of our budget, it is, it is going down and that's in the face of transportation costs for special education in such places, that's not sustainable at all. And that's, that's very problematic. I'd be curious about any grants you might apply for if they are impacted by the MBTA's Community Act. I certainly hope not. So that, if that is the case, we should be made very, very well aware of it. I mean, it should be very well-known if those are ever impact our ability to get grants. And then the, the last piece is our high school between last year to this year to next year will increase by 20 students in enrollment. We've gone from seven classes to eight classes. I struggle without adding that position that was requested to the high school. I don't think that's appropriate. We have a need, I appreciate that they will make it work, but it will mean cutting some classes and removing some options for kids. We saw the phenomenal program of studies. In reality, by not adding that position, we're making parts of that program of studies not available and accessible. And I, I struggle with that sincerely. I would encourage a conversation back with the town manager. If we could add, it would be a fraction of a percent, a small one, to 4% to get that position added back in. And if we could, I, it would benefit the high school. I, I think it's, it's important for people to, who were pounding on the school district to reduce staff when our enrollment was going down, to acknowledge that if you make that comment, you have to be flexible and open to the idea of staff going up in the other direction. And, and it's a fact, our enrollment is now going back up. So those are my, my comments. Again, thank you very much and I appreciate all the time and effort in this. It's, it's amazing amount of work that goes into this every year. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Samaha.
Thank you, guys. Again, I echo what my colleagues have said too here about just the, the amount of work that this is and how much, how hard this is, how these, how hard these decisions that are being made are. Because you're looking at, you know, the things that you, I mean, to get the budget to where it was the last time is really hard. And then to then pare it back even more becomes even, even more difficult, especially when you're looking at things like, I guess some of the positions that were in, that were here last time that are no longer here, like the, the special ed program coach. And I'm, I'm glad to hear that that's, you're going to pursue grant funding for that. I think that's really good. But seeing that there is something that might be cut as well as the behavior specialist ed assistant, well, these are two positions that are directly affecting special education. You know, both a behavior specialist and a program coach are people that are going to help build capacity among, are the, are the staff here to be able to, to learn different ways, to be able to better address the needs of the students, which then keeps the students in district, which means that we don't have these out-of-district. And then we look at these non-salary issues and, you know, out-of-district placement, you know, like, you know, this is, that's part of it. So it's, it's, everything is so connected and that, you know, losing a, you know, this ed assistant and program coach is gonna not just impact the non-salary, it could impact the out-of-district placement. And I, and I, and I think that it's, it's just, it's just hard to, to, to see that and to know that, like Mr. Turner was just saying about how that non-salary line is actually going, kind of going down. You know, I, I think about, you know, we've, I think every, maybe the first year, no, but I've, this is now my sixth, fifth, sixth budget cycle and all, my entire time here, it's been essentially level funded every year. It's amazing to see what this district has done in order to grow and continue to offer programming. And you heard about our performing arts and you hear about athletics tonight and there's so many really great things that are happening despite this sort of level funding, but that, we're going to get to a point where it's just like, you know, like Mr. Gold was saying, like, it's not going to be sustainable to continue to level fund because level funding in real dollars can mean decreases. So it's, you know, it's, there, there's a lot of concerns that, that I have with this budget. I mean, one of the, the items too was a reduction in translation services, which is going to impact our ESL students and their fam, like, this, all of this stuff sort of, I think, you know, builds, you know, you know, gets, you know, more and more complicated and sort of builds off, off each other. So I, I guess I don't really have any questions, but I just want to just voice my concern about how interrelated all of these parts are and how much I appreciate the work that goes into this and how hard those decisions are made. But I, I think this committee and I think the town is going to have to have some real conversations about a, a lot of things, you know, including we've got the, the school vote coming up, you know, the, you know, how, how is the, the, you know, the MBTA communities act, how is that really going to impact us? I know it's not going to impact the MSBA, but maybe it's going to show up in other ways. So I think, you know, in a broader sense, this town has a lot of sort of soul-searching, I think, to do in how we spend money and what our, what our values are here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Samaha. Other questions? Dr. McCollough?
So thank you for doing this. I know it's very hard, especially when you have your roll-up and then you have to then find where your cuts are and everything like that. Before I get to my question, you know, I think one thing I would say is, this is only my second go-around, but I did appreciate what I think the new town manager has done. In the past, it was a little more secretive on, hey, here's the number, make it work. Mr. Slagle's been a true partner with Dr. Brand here and I think we should all acknowledge that as well. I know we would like to have more money, of course, I would too. A 4% increase is good, better than I've seen in the past couple of years. Of course, more would be better for sure. I think some of my colleagues did bring it up too, that we live in the area of Prop 2 and 1/2, so those living at home, you know, overall property taxes going to increase by 2 and 1/2% every year. I'm sure everyone remembers, we had a massive run of inflation the past couple of years where core prices rose over 25% in a couple of years. It's going to be a while before we can catch up to that with the Prop 2 and 1/2 guidance. Not a great situation. I think something we're going to have to deal with and to what Mr. Samaha said, I think this can maybe propel us to have some conversations with our select board and finance committee members about, hey, you know, I'm sure we're not the only municipality feeling a little strained right now, so, you know, what can we do together to try to solve this issue? With that, you know, more, I was at a high level now, diving down a little more deeper, the non-salary cuts that you made, I was wondering, not everyone line by line, but maybe you could talk about the impact it has on the district and then also maybe explain a little bit on the circuit breaker offset, like that traditionally, like how we've approached that and how we were able to find those funds or, you know, kind of project those funds a little bit.
Sure. Paul, do you want to speak?
Circuit breaker. So, circuit breaker is a reimbursement program from the state. It reimburses up, up to 75% of tuitions, out-of-district tuitions above a certain threshold for each student. So those are funds we receive, receive each year. And transportation has just been rolled into that and in this year in FY '25, it's 44% reimbursement rate. What we've done and what I've done since I've been here is we just project a offset to the budget. So with circuit breaker funds, you can, funds you receive in one fiscal year, you can hold them in revolving account, but you have to use them by the end of the next fiscal year. So if a reimbursement we get in, I'm just going to make this up, in FY '25 for a million dollars, if I don't charge any tuitions to that in this fiscal year, next fiscal year, I have to charge a million dollars worth of tuitions to it. So what we've done here is we tried to carry over from one year to the second year as much as we can to protect us, I'm being honest, for move-ins that we don't anticipate. A transportation increase that we're going to get for out-of-district transportation this year, we're kind of protected from that. So from FY '24 receipts of circuit breaker funding, FY '25, I carried over about $2.6 million. So with this increase of the offset, we now have an offset of about $2.5, $2.6 million. So it, it's a mechanism to kind of protect the district. So a lot of districts have like a circuit breaker, I forget what they call it, stabilization fund or whatever, not a circuit breaker, but a stabilization fund. We've kind of used this a little bit and many districts try to do the same thing to, to keep something, just to protect the district so that you don't run into the problem that I just mentioned. So I felt comfortable being able to increase the offset for FY '26 by the $286,000 to bring this to about 2.5, 2.6 in, at the total offset for FY '26.
So if I understand you correctly, traditionally taken a very conservative approach with that, here just kind of took a little bit less conservative, but based on historical data.
Yeah, exactly.
That makes sense. Thank you.
And as long as the reimbursement rate hovers around the same amount that it's been recently, that's fine. If it goes the other way, that could be problematic, not just for Wilmington, but for other districts. And then the other is always the unknown and that is, will we receive an obligation for students that are currently not enrolled right now that become part of our responsibility that may have a tuition, a significant tuition? And we just, we never know that. And just real quick, on, on special education, this is, this is not, again, for those watching, this is not just a Wilmington, this is not just a stressor on Wilmington. This I see in the headlines and I'm sure many of you do, you see, receive the Mass Association School Committee education highlights. This is an issue that is, well, probably nationwide, certainly statewide. Just a headline that I saw today of a nearby district, won't name the district, but where there is advocacy to have what I probably think is the tuition piece charged directly to the town. I mean, people are, districts are grappling with this and how to balance, you know, a fiscal plan that can tend to all the needs and it's, it is becoming really, really challenging. It's not just a Wilmington, it's not just a Wilmington challenge. Chris, just shifting to, just the professional development is obviously a big one there. Christine, could you just briefly touch upon some of our, our thinking and the results of reduction there?
Sure. So as, you know, you've heard us say many times before, people, we're in the people business and staffing is, you know, what, maintaining our staff is really priority. So we really took a close look at where can we trim that, you know, so for example, I know I allocate funds to bring in a keynote speaker. I would much rather have a teacher than a keynote speaker. So, you know, we went through and looked at each line and thought, where can we pull from? So we made some reductions to money that we set aside for strategic planning implementation. The, again, keynote speakers, stipends for curriculum writing or professional development took some reduction there. And I was able to, because the summer school program has been, last year was the first year that we really turned a little bit of a profit, so we were able to have a revolving account for that. So I was able to take the director's stipends and put them into that revolving account. I did take some money out that I had set aside for specific, you know, continuing to build our repertoire of skills for some teachers who need specific certifications. We should still be okay, but I won't be able to bring as many new people through that training. And, you know, at, at the end of the day, really just trying to see where else I, you know, what are the lines that, you know, I've been funding that with good intentions that we were going to get this done, but it hasn't happened yet and what can wait till next year? So and in addition to the central office PD budget, the principals, particularly at the secondary level, took some reductions in, within the specific departments related to PD as well, to try and create some more capacity and reach that number. And I did mention before, we talked a little bit about the textbook piece, trying to see if there's anything else. Oh, translations. So the translations were not overly concerned about. We, it was a high estimate last year. It was our first year really building it in the budget that way last year. And because of the resources that we have- Um, and because of the resources that we have, the programs that we have, we are actually in a better place with that budget than we thought we would be at this point in the year. We have the Lexmark machine that allows us to do the translations, and we anticipated that it would be a higher expense at this point, and we, we're using it regularly, but it's, um, there are lots of different options for translations, and the Google Translate for certain things. So, we're finding that as teachers become more proficient and administrators become more proficient with, um, which tool is the right tool for which document, um, there's many free options that are allowing us to do some translation things without the expense that we initially thought. Most of our expenses, um, with the translations are really for interpretation more so. So, those meetings, live meetings, having an interpreter, um, is where the majority of that funding, um, comes from, but we are comfortable with that, um, cut to that line, given the, the amount of, uh, translations that we've been, you know, using this year, so.
Does that help a little?
Very helpful. Yes, thank you for that.
Uh, while we're on the topic, just of the non-salary changes, correct me if I'm wrong, but translations, ten thousand dollars, PD, forty-two and change, those line items are not eliminated. Those are, there is still translation money. There is still PD money. It's just we've reduced those a certain amount to get us to the, the manager's recommended level, so.
Correct.
David, did you have your hand up?
Uh, sure, um, I wanted to, um, just getting into the, the circuit breaker for a second. One of the things that is frustrating about the circuit breakers, that the legislature almost never fully, it comes close to fully funding it. Uh, so, again, like, in theory, it's like you get the seventy-five percent reimbursement, but in reality is, Paul said, it's like, oh, well, it's forty-four percent this year, um, because they never actually necessarily put the money behind it. And, uh, and that's, you know, the, the, the state budget, of course, is under similar pressures as, as local budgets do, but, you have to, I think it's one reason why, uh, it's wise to be conservative, uh, in that, because you, you know, you're, you're, if you count too much on, you know, and hope too much that you're gonna be getting more reimbursement, uh, from the state, then, uh, that almost never works out, uh, works out well for you. Uh, uh, we've already gone over a bunch of the different things, um, for, cause I, I was interested also in getting a little more, drilling down a little bit into some of the specific areas, but we've been, we've been doing that here of, uh, of where we, where we pulled the reductions out. And it's, uh, it's unfortunate that you can raise the school budget, but your money pay, you get less for your money than you did a couple of years ago. And then, again, this is this idea that the budget keeps going up, but it's not like we're suddenly flush with resources. But this is all, you know, largely trying to, uh, maintain what we have and make sure that we're continuing to, um, to serve our students the way that, the way that we are, the way that we have been. Now, I, I mean, I also, you know, get kind of a window into a lot of other, uh, a lot of other districts, and so you could be in worse positions. And so I also, um, at the same time, it is worth understanding that, you know, in a, in a lot of ways, despite the challenges that we face, that, um, you know, we, um, could, things could be a lot worse. I don't know if that's a po- super positive message, but, uh, there are, the truth is, there are a lot of districts who are, uh, you know, not just kind of looking at not the increases that they want to try and stay level, but are looking at actual cuts, like real cuts, like we have less money this year than we did the year before. And, uh, and of course, there are plenty of districts that are getting small increases, uh, that are just not going as far as they, as they used to be. And so I, I am grateful for the, um, you know, for the support of the town and the town manager and, uh, and the resources that are, um, that are given to the school district to do the work that we do, even though it has become challenging.
Could I make one?
Please.
Just, uh, as Mr. Ragstil said, just as an example, back at FY ten, again, a long time ago, the reimbursement rate was a little over forty-two percent, the circuit breaker. In FY eleven, it was a little over forty-three percent. It's been in the seventies since then, but that's just an example of what can happen. And when that happens, it essentially cuts your reimbursement in half. So, that's just to what Mr. Ragstil said.
Megan? Did you wanna go?
I'll go.
Well, I was just, um, thinking a little bit more in the future, the consolidation of the buildings. When I look through this line by line, and you can start to see how consolidation will really help us with our budget. And I just think, I know it doesn't help us at this moment, but I think it is something for us to think about in terms of what this could look like when we're not running, you know, all of these buildings. I mean, I think that's gonna be a pretty signi- I mean, maybe not as significant as I'm thinking it will be, but I think it's gonna feel a bit more streamlined. Um, and I'm also curious about the new building for the town hall school. Will that change anything in our budget once that open? I mean, I know we're not running, like, I know Roman House isn't under our, it's not in your, right, but there's things that are happening in Roman House that are funded. Will that change? Any significant money or not really?
Yeah, I mean, so, we do pay for electricity.
Yeah.
The town pays for gas or oil and so forth, so that, um, I don't know how it would work in the, the new building, but I'm sure there'll be some allocation of electricity costs. Um, I think one of the things, just maintenance at the Roman House, you know, there's always something going on there. So, you'll have that, and then, you know, any maintenance that happens at the, um, art center with student support services, that'll no longer be within the schools, you know, again, we, we again just pay for electricity there. So, I'm not sure how much, because we don't know how the allocation's gonna happen and so forth, but I think from a town perspective, it's, you know, potentially at least one building that they don't have to worry about shoveling or, you know, just basic maintenance or.
Yeah, people aren't aware that it's non-septic, which I always find very.
Septic system pumping.
Every Friday.
I just think it's important to remind us to sort of, we're getting to a place, I think, where it's not, you're gonna feel quite as, I think maybe it'll always feel tight, and it'll always feel like we're having to make the, but I do think it'll feel a bit more streamlined and productive in some ways, so. And thank you for putting this together, as always. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Turner, did you have your hand up?
So, yeah, just to, it was actually almost exactly in line with Mr. Ragstil, but it was, it was gonna be to lean on our folks who chat with our friends in the legislature to, you know, yeah, se- seventy-five percent is not a hundred percent, and it, and it is above a threshold too. So, there's still the carrying cost for the district, even before you get to the circuit breaker, for children that have this, the, the stronger needs and need to be placed out of district, is higher than the average for a student who's able to be educated in the district. That's even before you get to the circuit breaker, and then above the circuit breaker, it's only seventy-five percent at best. Whereas, you know, if the at-best could be a hundred percent, and then you're arguing about whether it's ninety or a hundred, um, but obviously, that's to Mr. Ragstil's other point, you know, the state budget has its own constraints as well, but it, it is, uh, a, a significant burden on all the school districts in the Commonwealth, and so it should be something that would have a lot of broad support to increase the circuit breaker. Um, and if we can just keep mentioning it, um, as one of those things that has a direct impact on our ability to educate students. So, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. McCullough?
Yeah, if I could just reply back to that, I'm not sure if my colleague, uh, talked about it last week, but we did actually meet with Senator Finegold's office, um, and advocated for increasing circuit breaker and also the out-of-district transportation to be funded by the state as well. So, to be clear, we've gotta make sure all these kids have, um, full rights and education, everything that they need. We just felt that the, um, because the costs are so variable, it puts a lot of pressure on smaller towns such as ours, and that the state should really step in and kind of help, not only towns like ours, but all the other towns in the state with that, um, funding.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Isa?
Just a one final comment that, that, um, that, uh, I wanna agree with, um, with Mr. Turner in my real discomfort about not being able to get that, um, social studies teacher at the high school. Cause I think that, you know, we are likely looking at a, you know, not a, not giant leaps, but like a steady increase in enrollment coming up for, you know, for a couple of years at least. And, you know, you get behind, and it just makes it harder to kind of get back to where you wanna be. So, you know, in a year or two, it's suddenly, it's just like, oh, we really need two new teachers. We really should have them, but it's like, ah, but can we get two? We didn't have that one before, and now it's just harder to kind of get to where we think appropriate staffing is. And, uh, so I, I, I share, I share that concern that, um, we're not gonna be, it's gonna be harder to kind of catch up if we sort of fall behind where we should be for next year.
So, I'll, if you wanna respond to that, I have, I have a comment, but if you wanna.
I do, no, I just, uh, this concern certainly noted and understood, and I, I would say this, that we, as we always do, are continuing, we have to continually very caref- to carefully watch what the enrollment shifts look like. We know that we're on a growth trend for, you know, the district as a whole, but certainly at the high school. We know that more students are coming back from other locations. We know this. And if the retention rate from eighth to ninth grade continues to be strong and robust, like it's trending, which I, and I believe there's every reason for it to happen, and more students for whatever reasons, but realize the amazing experience that can be having here at the high school. If those numbers, you know, as we get into next year, um, become a problem, we're gonna be, we're, we're gonna clearly be back here advocating for whatever staff that's necessary. There's some other things, as you know, at play that we're, we're also, you know, considering in the larger scheme of, you know, discussions and planning that could also play into what this could look like going forward relative to, uh, you know, ratios, people-teacher ratios and so on. So, I don't doubt we'll be having this conversation again. And I don't doubt that, and to your point earlier, I think it was Mr. Turner, that we again, for, for folks watching, the district has made reductions in staffing at the high school that was in response to the reduction in enrollment. And absolutely, should that swing the other way, which it is, we need to respond in kind. Uh, I don't think there's anyone in this community that doesn't want this to be a very strong institution here across the district, but certainly the high school, and that means making sure we have staff appropriate so that we're not filling gaps or voids with study periods like other districts might. That's not where we're gonna find ourselves, so.
No, thank you. That's great. Um, I just wanted to take a minute to, again, echo the, the thoughts and appreciation to you and your team for what is, A, a great presentation, but B, hours upon hours of work that goes into this. Um, and so thank you for, for everything that went into this. I also appreciate that we, as a community, I think are, you know, things are tight, but we are in a better place than some of our friends and neighbors, and, and I, I think that, that shouldn't go unnoticed and that we are still a district that, for all intents and purposes, doesn't charge fees. We don't have bus fees and athletics fees and things, and, and I am hopeful that that will continue to remain as it is, and, you know, there may be some difficult conversations in the years ahead, but where we are right now, I think we are, we're in a good place, and it's, uh, you know, due in no small part to you and your leadership uh, and, and the team that, that puts this together, so thank you for that. I do wanna go back, just very briefly, and we've talked about it a little bit, to the, the proposed personnel that is now no longer being included in the budget, the two hundred and thirty somewhat thousand dollars. And just for sort of my, the understanding, let's say the committee felt very strongly that the social studies teacher should be added back in. Is there, have there been conversations around Plan B? You know, I understand that these are, tho- these are recommended positions that aren't currently in the budget, and so it, it doesn't necessitate, uh, staff reduction or anything like that, but, you know, if, if we said, nope, we, we need this position, we want this position, you need to find that, whatever it is, eighty thousand dollars, somewhere else. Have we had those conversations, or is that something that would have to be figured out later?
Uh, that's a good question. We have not had, we've not, we've not, we've not developed a Plan B. This is, this is the, the plan that we put forth for your consideration, but it is just that. And again, I say this with, it, it is your budget, it's your budget that you have to approve, and so it's not our budget, it's not my budget, although the superintendent's recommended budget, but it's ultimately your budget. And so if the, if the request on the table is, we really, really want you to go and try and figure this out, um, I, you know, the town manager's presenting the budget, his budget presentation on Monday night, as you can see here on the slide. So, I, you know, I, I, I would have to believe, I, I, Paul knows more about that process than I, but I have to believe that those, those figures and, and numbers are locked down with the other departments across the board, so I don't know that there's anything that can be done there. But I ha- I can't tell you that we've looked at an alternative to find a short, to make up that position, but if that's, if that's the request, we can certainly go and take a look at that. How does that work from a sort of a procedural standpoint, though?
Uh, you'd have to have a discussion with the town manager, or we have to figure out where to find, keeping the numbers bottom line the same, where to find the money.
Somewhere else, essentially.
Yeah, yeah, essentially.
And I, to be clear, I'm not suggesting that, that that should take place. I was more curious if there.
Yeah, that's what we'd have.
If, if the conversation was, well, if the committee really wants this, then we can do that, so, okay.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we just have to find the, the funds somewhere else.
Sure.
Yeah, and I will say that this was, we had some pretty large increases on non-salary, and they were kind of contractual, you know, look at the special ed, um, out-of-district transportation. Quite frankly, I, when we met with the town manager, we were kind of happy that we were at four percent, cause anything below that, we wouldn't have been able to get there. Uh, would've been really, really difficult, so, I mean, he really did try to work with us, and as you know, there's other stuff going on, uh, as well, so there's some unknowns too. So, we did the best, best we could do, but, yeah, if, if that's the case, we just have to figure out where that money comes from. Yeah, the other thing that we're kind of lucky here, and I'll just, you know, mention it, is a lot of districts have, health insurance and so forth under the town, I mean, un- under the schools.
Right.
Our health insurance is under the town, and you can imagine what those increases are that the town kind of bears for the, the whole town. Uh, that is kind of a benefit we have as well, but, um, yeah, I mean, if we need to talk about that, we could try to, not sure where right now, but.
Thank you. Dr. Bryson?
I'm just curious what the number, I don't know enough about the social studies needs and numbers, and so if that were really something that people were interested in, I would need to see what class, where is this? What classes? What numbers? Are we really full, or is there a class of fifteen, sixteen? Like, I just think that that's a huge ask, if we're not really certain that this is a necessity.
For sure. And I, I defer to the, the expertise of the, of, of you and your staff. So, my, my thought on that now would be, we should assume that will be a needed position next year. When we talk about FY twenty-seven, we, basically what it looks like and what it's tracking at, if we can make it work this year, it's gonna be that much harder next year. So, when we start to even begin with the thing, that's at the top of the list for the next year's budget, because the, all the same conversation points that Mr. Ragstil and I, and others have brought up, will be magnified next year. So, um, I, 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 I think that's where I would get with that. To your point, Dr. Bryson, we, we do have to rely on all of your expertise and, and where it can happen. Um, I'm, like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm not happy about it, but with that all said, knowing that it's, it's something that, that pretty well has to be from the starting point next year, should be at least the assumption that I would work under.
Sure.
And so, taking us through to next steps, I know the town manager is on Monday.
Right.
The meeting on February twelfth is when we will vote.
That's right.
Okay, and then March sixth, you all will present to the finance committee.
Yeah, right, right.
Other questions or thoughts or comments? Dr. Brand, do you have anything you wanna close with, or thank you?
No, I mean, thank, yeah, yeah, thank you, uh, again to Paul and Lauren who's here, central office team. It, uh, yeah, it's, it's certainly, we wish we were in a different place. Uh, the conversation has been, I think, great, uh, on point, helpful. You know, I appreciate, Dr. Ragstil, we, when you take a look at the, our surrounding neighbors and friends, it could be worse. For sure. But there's a fine balance here, as I mentioned at the outset, around sort of where the tension is around some of these things we don't have any control over, but the effort to try and preserve what we do need and also sustain continual growth and improvement to support programs and services, there is a growing and real tension here that I'm concerned about, I know you are too, uh, that I think we'd be, need to be very, very mindful of as we move forward, so. So, thank you for the discussion.
Thank you.
One final comment is that, um, I think that, uh, there's certainly no contradiction in being grateful for the resources that we do have, while also recognizing the challenges that we're faced, um, by, you know, by not having additional things that our kids could really benefit from. And, uh, and also, lastly, that I, I, I think this probably goes without saying, but, um, a little bit of the discomfort in the school committee, I think, should, should certainly not be taken to, uh, suggest that we think you didn't carefully consider all of these, all of these choices that have to be made and didn't weigh very.
of these choices that have to be made and didn't weigh very carefully. It's like, well, it could be here, it could be there. What's the best, you know, where's the best place to do it? And it's, you know, we're not, no one is saying just like, well, if only the administration cared about the high school the way the school committee does.
But, but, I mean, but that's what this should be about. And this, the discussion, far from it just to be like, okay, it looks good. Thanks for the job, right? I mean, this is, this is part and parcel of what I think these discussions should be and the, and the contributions and bearing opinions that are around this table. So, no offense taken, but thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you. With that, that concludes new business and brings us to other reports. Are there any subcommittee reports this evening? Okay. Correspondents?
None this evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Turner?
Future school committee.
Can I just say something about subcommittees?
Yes, you can.
We do need to schedule a policy.
Yes, we do.
So, that's all. Just saying that out loud so that it happens.
Noted and agreed. Back to future school committee dates and other notable items. On January 27th is the Parent Guardian University Workshop, Social Media and Anxiety at 6:00 PM here in this room. January 29th is the next Wildwood School Building Committee meeting, which is a hybrid meeting and also taking place at the North Intermediate School at 7:00 PM. January 30th, Family Literacy Night for pre-K to grade five at the middle school at 6:00 PM. January 30th, 31st, and February 1st, the middle schools drama club presentation of Descendants the Musical. February 5th, the Wildwood School Building Committee meeting, hybrid at 6:30 PM. On February 12th, our next regular school committee meeting here in this room at 7:00 PM, followed by our next, next regular school committee meeting on February 26th at 7:00 PM, also in this room. Mr. Turner?
All I got?
Outstanding. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Golden, second? Mr. Ragstale? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you and good evening.